The meeting will now come to order. Will please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Krab.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Fournier and the Mayor, Barb Dempsey.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Fournier and Mayor Dempsey.
Give a second.
Second.
All in favor? No, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Do we have some? Nothing? Okay. Then next item would be adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes. Public participation. This is an opportunity for those in the audience to come for us. You must state your name, your address, and adhere to a three-minute time schedule. Those who would like to address, please do so now.
Nikki Weiss, 18200 Terra Drive, Clinton Township. I'm from the Mount Clemens Downtown Development Authority. And I just wanted to remind everyone that this weekend is our Made in Michigan show, on Friday from 11:00 until 8:00 p.m., and on Saturday from 10:00 until 6:00. We have 65 vendors this year, including artists as well as culinary. And we have a great show. And we also, this year, again, have the Children's Business Fair that'll be in the Cherry Street Mall. This is an opportunity for children from 7 to 17 to come up with a product that they'll make themselves. And then they learn about markup and they learn how to sell their product. And we've got a great variety of children's arts and crafts involved. They'll be on Saturday from 11:00 a.m., or, excuse me, Saturday the 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We will also be having our entertainment with Roscoe the Clown on Saturday morning. He'll do his normal show at 11 o'clock. And then we will also have the Spring Fashion Show from the Fashion Factory. This is where the students come and design clothes made out of boxes, packaging of Michigan-made products. If you haven't seen it, it's really very interesting in their creativity and what they do with it. We will also be having live entertainment Friday night from 6:00 until 8:00. And then on Saturday, throughout the day, after the fashion show at 1:00, it'll end at 2:00. And from 2:00 until 6:00, we'll have live entertainment at the Fountain Stage. I also want to remind everyone that the spring calendar is out. We have them in the stores. They're here at City Hall. And I do want to take time to thank our volunteer group that came down on Sunday afternoon and helped us with our spring cleanup downtown. Mike Bernier donated the bags for us, and I wanted to thank Mike for that. And then Anthony from Happy's Pizza, Happy's Pizza donated all the pizzas for our volunteers. And we had over 40 people come downtown, including the basketball team from Mount Clemens High. So I want to give a big shout-out and thank everyone for coming and helping us. I know Jeff and his crew appreciate it, too. Thank you.
Gloria Haller, 260 CAS. I don't know if I can fit it all in. Let's all put the most important stuff first. I have to respect, we disagree with Vice Mayor Bunton. I think it's past time, in fact, it's now past time for the city manager to be hired. But I have a question. You had Linda Koonath here back when you made the decision of whom would be city manager or interim. Linda Koonath not only had the accounting experience that Ms. Borges does not, she had a master's in public administration. And I understand it was never offered to her. I guess I'd like to know, did the mayor need a puppet? What was it? Now, let me go over a couple things with you about why I'm unhappy with it, and a lot of other people are, too. If you take the increase in pay for Jeff Wood, for his assistant, for Lisa Hersell, for her assistant, and the legal fee spike that's occurred during that time, and you add it to what you were willing to use to pay the city manager, you could've had a great city manager, 110, you blew right on by it. So what's the excuse? And what's the excuse for her still being in place? In addition to that, it would appear it's causing her to be unable to conduct her normal job because I have two very serious problems with her regarding treatment of FOIA's. And I did speak with the Attorney General's Office today. Very often she'll say to people, or Kathy will, "We've been to school, we know this." Really? Well, a couple months ago, I had written to Ms. Martin because of some problems I'd had with her, it was back in October, and I said, "On the FOIA side, I lit FOIA law slide. I had asked for something, and it was legitimate, and it was denied. I let it go, but I still have those documents, because you never know." But that incident alone, on the part of city clerk's office, bespoke either a lack of knowledge or willful disregard of FOIA law. There's no denying that. Now, most recently, I tried to FOIA something, and I get the same song and dance, "Oh, you've got to ask for something specific. It's in the law." Really? I refer you to the statute, 15.233, Section 3, Para 1. Listen. Except as expressly provided in Section 13, and it's not there. And I checked with the Attorney General's Office, FOIA and Open Division. It is not there. Upon providing a public body's FOIA coordinator, which would be the clerk's office, with a written request that describes, not that names, that describes it, and yet they deny the FOIA, I'm turning both these over to the Attorney General's Office for complaint.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Mike Zubis, 221 CAS. Today I was hoping to talk about the way we vote. A couple years ago, I had an interesting idea. I noticed that 75% of Americans are registered to vote, but only 20% do actually vote. And that coincides with Mount Clemens elections. So I was wondering, how can we increase voter turnout? And after looking into other states and other areas, there are two specific cities, Cambridge, Massachusetts, and Minneapolis, Minnesota, which use a system called ranked choice voting. And it's a completely different system, but it still uses a similar one-person-one vote, where you can get, right now, you have the first pass to post voting, which is the most votes, it's similar to a horse race, wins if a person, most votes gets passed the post. But this ranked choice voting, what it does is, you can vote for a certain amount of people, like if there's five people running for mayor. And you can go, the first choice is this person, the second choice is this person, the third choice is this person. And after that, what happens is there's a calculation system, and I'm not a mathematician, so I don't really know the mathematics of it, but it can be looked up. Even, there's even a system where the first election in Minneapolis, they found a way to hand-count all the votes. So it can be hand-counted, even though it's some complex math involved. But what they do is they allow you to vote for everybody and tabulate based on the first, second, third, fourth, and fifth choice. They use those and move them around. It's called, it's also called, single transferable vote in Europe. It was created in Europe in 1850s. And we brought it over here, but in the 1940s, somebody, Republicans, vetoed it and got rid of it in the 1940s. So now there's only certain cities. And Minneapolis, most recently, did it in 2007. They had approximately, out of 231,000 people, only 40,000 people voted. And two elections later, the recent one in 2017, out of 239,000 people, 100,000 people voted. So the idea is that people can vote for whoever they want. They could have their cake and eat it, too, and be able, in a voting sense, be able to vote for everybody and no, well, not nobody, I guess, to be able to vote in the way that they feel, because sometimes just voting for one person isn't what nobody wants to vote for. So the hope is to increase the amount of people voting to bring it up to about, at least 50%, which is where Cambridge, Massachusetts was at during their primary. And in their Maine election in 2017 was at 65% out of 70,000 people. We don't have 70,000 people, but I think the concept is that people can see that they can vote for more than one person, and that would entice more people to vote, including third parties such as myself. Because I would love to vote for more than just the Greens and be able to say that we're not the spoiler vote, which was used so heavily last year in the Ohio special election. So I would implore the city to look up two YouTube videos. One made by the Maine Public Radio, which is about a minute, and the other one by the Minnesota Public Radio, which is about three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. We have anyone else?
Good evening. Phil Gilchrist, 125 Macomb Place and 1130 Wellesley Drive. I'd like to thank the City Commission for the lovely proclamation signed by Mayor Dempsey in honor of our 50th anniversary received just a couple of months ago. And a special thank you to Commissioner Mensah for presenting it at our annual meeting back in March. I'd also like to invite the Commission and all of our community to join us on June the 8th for our Super Sad Arts Day event presented by First Day Bank, which you have a special event application for on the agenda this evening. The day itself will be full of free art activities intended for the family. We'll have a number of performances throughout the day, including a tour of public art in downtown Mount Clemens and a tour focusing on the history of our Carnegie Library and Art Center organization. The event will run from 10:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. that day, with a special ceremony at 1:00 p.m. to celebrate and commemorate 50 years of service to our community through the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
George K. O., 180 Grand. I had asked a question at the last City Commission meeting, so of course I will anticipate the answer from Mr. Wood during his portion of the agenda. And this is as it relates to 142 northbound Grashit and as to whether or not the fix was in, as had been kind of indicated as the process went through. Commissioner Campbell, if you could, pass that to each of the Commissioners and City Attorney and the acting, or I believe it would be acting interim city manager and city clerk. The two questions I have for Jeff, as has been written today, would be in regard to, of course, or if it's Lisa that can answer it, I'm not sure everybody's wearing a lot of hats around here, who within the city administration had requested to change the agenda item and change the, and overrule the planning, excuse me, overrule the Planning Commission's decision to unanimously decline the rezoning from central business to general commercial. And this is a timing issue in regard to procedural matters. I have reached out to certain local and state law enforcement personnel who have indicated there could be some wrongdoing. I'm not here to make any allegations or to name any names. And the second question would be, when was the city attorney instructed to draft that ordinance, the specific language that was also inserted in that April 1st Agenda Packet item? It certainly didn't show up at the Planning Commission at any time. And there was one other technicality where at the Planning Commission, you did not have a certified copy of their resolution. It was not signed. I believe that chairperson, Richard Shoemaker, had forwarded to Jeff the fact that he had not certified the resolution, wanted to find out if there were any more comments, and had never heard back from Brian, so obviously the decision had already been made that 142 is going to go in a separate direction. So I appreciate the answers to those questions. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Okay. Then we will close. Any comments? Next on the agenda is administrative response to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. None. Okay, then moving along. Approval of minutes. Do we have a motion?
Move to.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the work session and the regular session of April 15th, 2019.
Second.
Roll call.
Ford.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay. General Business. 98. Public hearing to consider the city of Mount Clemens' proposed 2019-2020 fiscal year budget and 2019 tax year millage rate. Need a motion?
Motion to open the public hearing to consider the proposed 2019-2020 fiscal year budgets and 2019 tax year millage rates. Support.
The public hearing will be to consider the proposed 2019-2020 fiscal year budgets and property tax millage rates. Total citywide millage rates are proposed to be 21.9573 mils, and total Downtown Development Authority district millage is proposed to be 1.61010 mils. The public hearing was advertised in the classified portion of the CNG Journal publication on April 24th, 2019, in accordance with the city charter.
This is a public hearing, so you can come to the mic and state what's on your mind. We do need to have you give us your address and your name properly. And the mic is open.
Page is Missia Bunton, Gloria Haller, 260 CAS. This couldn't be better timing. There were some questions asked in the pre-meeting, and you need to continue asking questions. I have, as I said, I looked at it and I added up the raises in pay that were necessary for Jeff Wood and Becky Phillips and Lisa Borges and Kathy Martin, plus the additional legal costs, plus what you're going to pay a city manager to begin with. What's been your problem? You've been affording a real city manager all along. We deserve one, not this retweet, not this lady who I should mention. It's kind of unfortunate that the charter allows, let me see where it is here, the charter doesn't allow for the city manager, and in her hat a city manager, to effect certain raises, one of which is her hat as a city clerk. You better keep questioning, you better keep looking, or I'm going to about begin asking for a forensic audit. She is putting herself in a great position, folks. And you remember, in 2014, you kind of screwed, blued, and tattooed us to get this millage, and we're not going to spend it on giving somebody top pay per job or top pension, because you know, when they do the pension, they take the last three years' pay, don't they? Well, sure she wants to stay in the city manager job. That's where the money is. You need to stop it. And you need to get somebody else in there, and you need to make a good faith effort. And it isn't going to be hard. Again, add up Jeff's extra pay, Becky's extra pay, Lisa's extra pay, Kathy's extra pay, the additional legal fees, plus the base salary you were offered.
Stick to the budget, please.
So, that is the budget. Her salary increase that she gave herself is in the budget. And if you don't know, we're not, that's a fact.
Right. Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Okay. Now we need a motion to close the hearing, the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing on the proposed 2019-2020 fiscal year budgets and 2019 tax year millage rates.
Roll call.
Support.
I'm sorry, support. Roll call.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Okay, next would be 9D. Approved purchases and payments of invoices. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Any questions? Yes?
I am looking at page 11 for Luigi Ferdinand, Ferdinand and Sun Cement Company. We have on here a request to extend the contract. I'm confused why it's in with the bills, because normally contract extensions are an agenda item, aren't they? So I'm confused why there are two. One for various cements for $161,000 and one for the sidewalk, you know, sidewalk repair program for $123.9. Why the contract renewal wasn't done in a separate agenda item?
Well, typically, this particular contract does not go to, it's always under purchases and payments. It's, this cement contractor, it's, it's very difficult to explain to you, but we develop pricing based upon different size areas and develop unit pricing.
I get that.
Right? And so what we're asking for is an extension of the 2017, to extend the 2017 pricing. This is always a bid that goes under purchases and payments. It's never been a contract, per se, approved by the commission.
Well, it says right here the word extend the contract.
I understand that's how it was worded by purchasing, but it's, in essence, it's extending that same pricing is what it's really.
Because when we extended the contract for our trash hauler, it was an agenda item that we approved, and it was not in payment of, you know, of purchases and invoices.
Right. And that's a contract. This is not really, I understand that's the language that was used as the contract. We're extending that unit pricing from 2017 is what we're asking for.
Commissioner Krab.
Is it because there's just not a definitive scope of work in this kind of situation?
Correct.
This is more of an as-needed type of, unlike the garbage where it's more of a
Right. And what we do when we bid these things out is bid, again, just to develop unit pricing on different thicknesses of concrete, different sized patches, you know, different types of traffic control, different types of marking, different types of concrete, indoor, outdoor, all different, you know,
Sure.
base repair, all different types of things.
In your experience, I know in our, in our business, the market has been somewhat volatile in terms of construction pricing with, with just, I guess, because of the economy being great and lack of trades, I mean, all kinds of types of factors and that. But, so we've seen lumber pricing go through the roof and, I mean, all types of things. So is this quite a good deal?
It is a good deal. Ultimately, it was, it was a good deal when we approved that contract and to extend, or when we approved that unit pricing. To extend that is, is a good deal. There's been a 3% to 7% increase on concrete services.
Excellent. Okay. I have one more question. On the emergency repairs for the subsoil snowmelt at the ice arena, because that was an emergency repair, it wasn't put out the bid?
That's correct. The, the way that I understand that ice, ice arena works is there, there are multiple floors to it. There's the ice, there's a cold floor, and then a warm floor. That warm floor is what keeps the frost from driving down into the ground from the ice and the cold floor. Without that warm floor, it's my understanding that the ice heaves, the concrete itself will heave and create, create major problems. It was suggested to me by the ice arena that they didn't really have time to, to wait for a bid process. It's limited companies that actually do this type of work. This is a company that they're very familiar with and comfortable with. They felt like it was good pricing, and that's why we were asking this body to move forward without a bid process and approve, approve that purchase.
And it's been budgeted. I mean, I know it's an emergency, a little bit ahead of schedule.
Yeah, we do have the funds available, but it is, yeah, I wouldn't say that it was budgeted. Didn't know that this was going to break.
Any other question? Any other comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Okay, item number 10. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented. Support.
Questions?
No.
Okay, none. Then roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Okay. City managers report.
There are some special events coming up. The following events will be taking place this weekend. The Made in Michigan Show, Friday, May 10th, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. through 8:00 p.m. And Saturday, May 11th, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m. Downtown on Macomb Place. Macomb Place will be closed between Main Street and Pine Street. Saturday morning with Roscoe the Clown Show, Saturday, May 11th, 2019, downtown at the Fountain Stage at 11:00 a.m. And the Made in Michigan Spring Fashion Show, Saturday, May 11th, downtown at Fountain Stage at 1:00 p.m. The Kiwanis Bike Rodeo is Saturday, May 11th, 2019, on Macomb Place at Pine Street, noon till 2:00 p.m. And the Farmer's Market Mother's Day Event, Saturday, May 11th, on North River Road, from 8:00 a.m. until noon. Applications for the Art of the Year awards are now available in the latest issue of the Clemence Times Newsletter, as well as at City Hall. Applications should be returned to the Mount Clemens Beautification Commission, care of Department of Public Services, 95 Eldridge, until July 19th, 2019. That's all you have to say.
Okay, very good. Commissioner, comments is next. Start with Commissioner Mensah, please.
So I participated in the downtown cleanup yesterday. As Ms. Weiss said, there were quite a few people there. It was really great to see so many people putting some effort into cleaning up the downtown area. And Coach Raymond Muske Valley from the Mount Clemens High School Basketball Program brought quite a few students who really did a lot of work. I'd like to thank, too, the Frusiano children. Gino and Bianca, all of five years old, came and cleaned up and picked up trash with their older sister, Sophia, who I think is six. So it was really nice to see people in the downtown area. And we got, I think we got a lot of done. There was a lot of trash picked up. There were some trees prunes and some flowers planted. The downtown looks absolutely wonderful, and it's all through volunteer efforts. And I think a special thank you goes out to Lisa and Davy Taylor for kind of coordinating that. It was, it was, believe it or not, it was really kind of fun. So anyway, the downtown looks great, all through volunteer effort. I checked out the Farmer's Market on Saturday, our first one. There were quite a few vendors there. For those of you that have been asking, Mount Clemens Bakery was there with all of their goodies. And they're, so they're back in town. There were a lot of flowers, a lot of plants. The eggs were, you know, guy was back selling duck eggs and honey and all kinds of stuff. So the Farmer's Market is back. Please come down and enjoy it. I wanted to give a shout-out to Dante I wanted to give a shout out to Dante Walker. He was recognized as a Macomb County 2019 All Academic Scholar. He's, you know, of course, from our high school. He's got a 3.83 GPA. He did a 1090 on the SAT. He's going to go to Oakland University for secondary education in mathematics. Just a couple of the things that he has done, he is, have been a member of Teens Talking Truth. He's been a member of the Mount Clemens Community Coalition. He, he volunteers at the Mount Clemens Optimist Club, trunk or treat. He's also volunteered for Santa Parade on several occasions. He's a math peer tutor at the high school. So a couple of the honors he's gotten, National Honor Society. He was the Mount Clemens Optimist Club Student Optimist of the Year for the 2015-2016 school year. He won the grand prize in 2018 for the student versus staff math challenge. I think he has a bright future ahead of him. He's worked hard and he's done some great things. I also wanted to point out that there is a new program at the Mount Clemens High School. It's called I Choose. This program, it's a pilot program. It was designed to teach students how to make healthy lifestyle choices in order to avoid things, chronic diseases like obesity, type 2 diabetes, tooth decay, and issues related to stress management. This program is likely to become a national model for other schools and districts and other communities. So there are good things happening in our schools. Thank you.
Mr. Ford?
I've been around the city a long time, and I've seen a lot of city managers come and go. One city manager wore cowboy boots and a hat. Another city manager was here long enough to get a nice paycheck and move on. I think Lisa and Jeff are doing an excellent job, as I would say, sharing the city manager's position. To the gentleman in the back that thinks there's something funny going on about 142 walnut, I think there's something funny, too. I don't think it's, the Spencerry should go there. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Krab.
I had the pleasure of being a Green Michigan Coordinator again this year and was able to distribute 1,200 Douglas fir trees to several of our neighborhoods and several of our residents. And 100 of the trees also went to Seminole School, where Junior Querio conducted a science lesson with the Seminole students. They were able to look at the root systems underneath microscopes and were, talked about life cycles, and I was really excited to be a part of that. I am excited to see the Made in Michigan Festival again this year and really encourage everyone to come out and support the fair and all of the things that are happening on Saturday. It looks like it's going to be a really big day in downtown Mount Clemens. I encourage, there are quite a few of our residents' children signed up for the Kids' Business Fair, and I'm promoting that, of course. That's a little bit selfish, because my son, Jack, will be in the Kids' Business Fair selling his, some of his stuff, which is exciting, and it's a great opportunity for kids to learn some business skills. My husband might have gone a little bit overboard with spreadsheet, but that's another issue. So it's an exciting opportunity for the kids of Mount Clemens, and hopefully you'll all come out and support them. Thank you to the Greater Morning Star Baptist Church. It was an exciting Sunday last week. They celebrated their 98th anniversary within our community. Not too many community establishments can say that they've been in Mount Clemens for 98 years, and that is a really exciting milestone, and so thank you to Pastor Martin for inviting me and for having me at the service. It was really, really an enjoyable time. I want to thank the Anton Art Center, because the two murals that are happening in downtown Mount Clemens, and I know the Art Center is part of the groups that are bringing those murals to downtown Mount Clemens, but they kind of, they've been the person that, the organization that is spearheading all that. I'm really excited. The murals, you'll notice the stairway to the river is looking really bright and exciting, and the Cherry Street Mall on one of the sides of the building are getting a really beautiful mural as well. So thank you very much for, for those efforts to beautify our city. There's another program going on that would be great if everybody participated called MC and Me. MC and Me is an effort to collect photographs or collect digital images of how you perceive Mount Clemens or how you see Mount Clemens. So it might be, you know, the beautiful trees that are blooming right now, the dogwoods and the magnolias, or it could be a certain building in Mount Clemens. It could be a bakery that you went every Saturday with your grandmother. It's something positive to, eventually, we're going to print all these, these images out and have a physical display at maybe these festivals or maybe in the Art Center, and the, the display will move. So it's a really cool, positive community initiative that we're trying to get off the ground, so you can submit those photographs by, at the Art Center, right?
Yes.
At, hard copies at the Art Center, so if you have an older photograph that we can scan in, they can go to the Art Center. Do you have the email? Okay, well, you can get the information at MC and Me's Facebook page, so just Google or just search Facebook, MC and Me, and all the information is there. That's all I have.
Commissioner Campbell.
With spring coming, I just want to thank all the residents that have taken time to work on their property, and I've noticed that several homes in Mount Clemens are being worked on and enhancing the neighborhood greatly. So thank you to all the residents for their work.
That's it? Thank you, sir. First, I guess I want to congratulate the DDA and Mickey Weiss and everybody else associated with this big weekend coming. I think that it's marvelous. I encourage our community to go and support this. You know, people have a tendency to think that Mount Clemens just doesn't have anything going on, and then we turn around and we look, and people are coming from all communities around us and getting involved, you know? I'd just like to encourage the citizens of Mount Clemens to support these efforts and these activities as well. Our National Prescription Drug Take Back Day was, this past Saturday was a great success. We encourage, I'm sorry, we collected over 64 pounds of unused unwanted drugs that was disposed of properly instead of being flushed down the toilet or washed down the drain. And 64 pounds is an awful lot of stuff when you consider the little pill that you're talking about dropping in that, that bag or that box. So that's an awful lot of drugs that's taken off the streets and off the market, but even more important, they won't get into the hands of unintended users. I thank the Mount Clemens community for your participation in this worthy effort. I, we'll just go right into Commissioner Comments, our Commissioner Comments about things to celebrate, because this is a time where we really need to look at the bright side and start celebrating the good stuff, because there's an awful lot of negativity floating around, awful lot of anger seems to be. So anyway, think of these as a good excuse to celebrate something. Month-long celebrations, Asian American Month, also the Pacific Islander Heritage Month, lupus awareness month, and that's something, if you feel the symptoms, you know anything about lupus, then please get to see your physician right away. National Blood Pressure Month, National Order, I'm sorry, National Older American Month, that's me. Week-long celebrations. Nurses Week is the first week of the month. That's the 7th through 13th, first full week of the month. The third week is National Bike Week. It's also National Police Week. So thank a police officer, ride your bike. On the fourth weekend is Emergency Medical Service Week, and those folks deserve an awful lot of credit, because they show up in some situations that most of us would run from. All right. Talk about some daily celebrations. It's already passed, but worthy of mentioning, the May 5th Cinco de Mayo. This is a celebration of the victory over France for, for the Mexican independence, which took place in 1862. There's a lot I can go over with that, but I'm just going to make a brief on that. Teacher, National Teacher Day is May 7th. Salute a teacher. They have helped you to get to wherever you are, no matter where you are at this point in time. May 8th is Victory in Europe Day. It commemorates the end of the fighting in Europe during World War II. The German army stopped fighting on May 2nd and formally surrendered unconditionally on May 7th. Victory in Europe was celebrated on May 8th. May 12th is International Nurses Day. We celebrate this day on the birth of, the birthday of Florence Nightingale. So the international date is that, but then on May 8th, National Student Nurses Day, and then May 6th is National Nurses Day for the United States. Obviously, it's something you should remember, and if you don't, let this remind you, is May 12th, Mother's Day. Treat your mother nice, give her some honor and some respect for the things that she has done for you. No matter how good or how bad you thought she was, she's your mother and she loved you and you love her, so give a lot of respect to that Mother Day. And then May 18th is Armed Forces Day, which celebrates those people who serve our country, whether it's men or women that are in the armed forces. We need to salute them and thank them for keeping our nation safe. And those are the things you can celebrate, so get out and celebrate those things. And you can think of anything else to celebrate, celebrate it, because these are times you really need to try to bring the lighter side of life. So with that in mind, Commissioner Wisdom for the night is, "Life is not about surviving the storm, but learning to dance in the rain." Think about that one. And with that, we'll say goodnight. We can offer a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
Rule call.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Mensah?